Okay, good evening. We're going to get started in just a second here. Welcome to the November 14th study meeting of the Livonia City Council. This meeting will set the agenda for the 1,958th regular meeting, which will be held on December 5th of 2022. I'll note that we have a full council this evening and we have no special presentations. We will go right to audience communication. The council sets aside 30 minutes for audience communication on any items that are not on the agenda this evening. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Kath, I think, Ms. McIntyre, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, I certainly will.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. McIntyre. So we will go to audience communication now. You are limited to three minutes on non-agenda items. Good evening. Your name and address, please.
Christopher Martson, Livonia, but I do have property up north. Just very interesting, the last meeting that was just concluded under the second audience communication at the end of that particular meeting. We had some individuals that ran for public office. Some made it and some didn't. But they came here to thank the people that voted for them, and I thought that was somewhat important. When Mr. Morgan first took over, he thanked the people and said, "You won't be disappointed." His exact words. When I ran for city council, the most votes I ever got was 5,060. But you have to keep in mind, I used my own money. I could have gotten money from the UAW. I could have had people endorse me. But I wanted to do it myself. After that particular election, I stood at this very podium and attempted to thank the people that voted for me. At that particular time, I was shouted down by two council members, Joe Laura and Laura Toy, who was president at the time. I thought that was horrible, and I still do. So it was nice to see you, Mr. Jolly, let people who ran for office thank the people that voted for them and not be shouted down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other audience communication? I see none. Counsel, do you have any announcements or comments to make? At this time, I see none. We'll go right to the agenda. Item number one is the reappointment of Melissa Carolack to the Livonia Brownfield Development Authority from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term, which will expire November 24th of 2025. Ms. Thomas, you have the floor.
Okay, great. You can hear me. Thank you, Council President Jolly. Good evening, Counsel. Thank you for considering the reappointment of Melissa Carolack to the Livonia Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Melissa currently works at Trinity Health Livonia as Vice President of Finance, where she oversees and manages revenue cycle, medical records, information systems, and general finance functions at the hospital. She also works closely with senior leadership to assist in achieving financial goals. She has a Bachelor of Science degree in accounting from Madonna University, as well as a Master of Business Administration degree from Madonna. And Melissa is here and happy to answer any questions.
Good evening. Welcome. Tell us anything that she missed.
No, I think she did a great job. You know what's funny? This is the, when I first got onto the committee, it was during COVID, so I wasn't really sure how this whole thing works. So, you know, anything, information that anyone has. But yeah, I'm a resident of Livonia, lifelong Livonia resident, and have been at St. Mary's for a long time.
Ms. McIntyre?
I have the pleasure of working with Ms. Carolack on the Livonia Community Foundation, where she is our finance treasurer.
The controller, I think is what they call it there.
Thank you. We've changed the titles. But she's not only very competent and very engaged, she is collaborative and cooperative and great to work with. All of these qualities, plus all of her professional recommendations, make her just absolutely qualified to be part of the outstanding Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. So I'd like to ask that this be placed on consent, Melissa's renomination or reappointment.
That's within approving, correct?
Yes, placed on consent, within approving.
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say congrats on your reappointment. I see your boss is back there. She's patiently sitting back there. Look at you. But congratulations and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any audience communication? I see none. You have an approving for consent, which means you do not have to come back for the regular. But thank you for your service.
Yep, thank you.
Item number two is the reappointment of Nicholas Lamaco to the Livonia Brownfield Redevelopment Authority from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term, which will expire on November 24th of 2025. Ms. Thomas?
Thank you. Thanks again for your reconsideration, or I'm sorry, your consideration for the reappointment of Nick Lamico for the Livonia Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Nick recently retired after 41 years of public service as a community planning consultant. He graduated with honors from Michigan State University, receiving his Bachelor of Science degree in urban planning. He received his Master of Public Administration degree from Wayne State University in 1983. Nick is married to Kathleen, Executive Director for the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. They reside in Livonia, and Nick and Kathleen just celebrated their 41st wedding anniversary.
Ms. Chair.
Vice President Toy.
Even though I graduated from Michigan State, I'm going to ask for approving on consent. Congratulations to you and thank you for all the hard work you do on that Brownfield Authority. Appreciate it, and I-
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Say hi to your wife, too.
I'm glad to.
Yes.
Would you like to say anything, sir?
No, I just appreciate the opportunity and ask to be reappointed.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your service. You have an approving for consent. If there is no audience communication, I see none. You don't have to come back for the next meeting. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. Item number three is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission. Petition 2022090219 submitted by Great Lakes Veterinary Behavior Consultants, PLLC, requesting to operate a veterinary clinic at 20337 through 20339 Farmington Road, on the west side of Farmington Road between Norfolk Avenue and Eight Mile Road in the northeast quarter of Section 4. Do we have anybody here from Great Lakes Veterinary Behavior Consultants? Please come on up to the podium. We're going to have Mr. Taramina introduce this item to us.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a waiver petition involving a veterinary clinic. This is property that is on Farmington Road just south of Eight Mile Road. It's a condominium office called the Medical Plaza, and Great Lakes would occupy the northerly building on this property. This is referred to as Building B or Unit 2. More specifically, Great Lakes would occupy half of that unit. They are not a traditional veterinary clinic. I'm going to let that petitioner describe what she does, but it primarily specializes in treating animal behavioral issues. The Planning Commission reviewed this petition in detail. Hours of operation are limited from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, by appointment only. They went over issues related to animal waste, noise, parking, which is not an issue at this particular location, and other issues, and are recommending approval of the petition as submitted. Thank you.
Is there anything that you would like to add, ma'am?
I guess just to thank you very much for considering my petition. I just wanted to explain what my practice is, that it's not a traditional bring-your-animal-in-for-vaccines or surgery or x-rays or anything like that. I strictly help animals and their owners with behavior issues. So I only see two species, dogs and cats. And any behavior issue that is a concern of the owner could be brought in to us. I've been a veterinarian for 30 years and been doing exclusively behavior for 15. And anything from separation anxiety to noise phobias to house soiling to, of course, there is a lot of anxiety and fear-based aggression, of course, that we treat, especially in dogs as well, and even in cats.
Ms. Toy?
I, what was your name? I'm sorry, Dr.?
Oh, this, I'm Kari Kraus.
Kraus?
Kraus, uh-huh.
Okay. I have the most wonderful animal. Clerk Nash can tell you all about my dog, and so can McIntyre. Yeah. So what are your hours? Not for me, of course, for the dog. Sorry. Are you open like seven days a week, then? Will you be doing that?
Six.
Six, okay. Six days and like nine to five kind of thing?
I'm sorry?
Nine to five.
We'll have some evenings as well. So I do have a Karen Pryor Academy-educated trainer who helps me, and of course, we'll build our staff once we get in. And so we'll have some evening appointments during the week. That's why I kind of gave a wide span of time, because there will be some days that were there, of course, past 5:00 p.m. during the week. We will have some included Saturday hours as well.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for doing this. Appreciate it. You probably graduated from Michigan State, too.
I did.
Yeah, cool. Okay, I'll ask for approving.
I know. Don't hold it against me.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
I already see your allegiance.
Item number three has an approving for consent. You do not have to come back. Thank you for doing business in Livonia. I have a couple of dogs who might need help. You might be their last hope, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Or my last hope. I should say my last hope, okay. But thank you very much. Any audience communication on three? I see none. Item number four is a site petition from the Planning Commission, submitted by Future Land Holdings LLC, requesting approval to redevelop the site, including demolishing the existing commercial building and constructing a new 26,000-square-foot commercial building for the purpose of operating a Ducati and BMW motorcycle dealership at 19265 Victor Parkway, on the west side of Victor Parkway in the southeast quarter of Section 6. Mr. Taramina, you'll take this one. Anybody who's here for that, please come up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a site plan petition, and it involves a former Doc's Sports Retreat property, which is on Victor Parkway just north of Seven Mile Road. Counsel is familiar with this property. It was a few years ago that we reviewed a petition, first to rezone the property to C4, high-rise commercial, and then, second, the approval of a site plan for a six-story dual-brandet hotel, Aloft and Element. But as we all know, that project never got off the ground. Your petitioner this evening is going to combine two dealerships that he currently owns, Ducati and BMW. These are both motorcycle dealerships. He will bring them under one roof, although they'll operate as two separate dealerships. The plan would be to demolish the existing restaurant building and then construct a new 26,000-square-foot facility. This is the existing site plan. The new site plan here would have the building closer to the highway. The building's placement, size, height, bulk area, everything meets the zoning ordinance. As I said, the building is 26,000 square feet in total size. It would have a mezzanine above, used for storage. The building is essentially split in two. You'll see this in the elevation plans, where it shows the BMW on one side of the building, the Ducati on the other side. You can see that a raised portion of the structure is actually a mezzanine that would be used predominantly for storage and some display as it faces the highway. Planning Commission went over this again in detail. Meets all the landscaping requirements, as I said, the setback requirements, lighting requirements, stormwater requirements, placement of trash dumpster, and then the building itself. The materials are all maintenance-free materials, predominantly metal panel and masonry products. And Planning Commission is recommending approval of the plan. This is a site, again, that you're familiar with. It was previously approved for a commercial rehabilitation district. There'll be discussions in the future about looking at other opportunities on the site in terms of future development. They would reserve a portion of the site closer to Victor Parkway for possible future development. Thank you.
Mr. Barr?
One question mark through the chair mark. This, just looking at the plan here, this, sorry, I gotta get the microphone here. There's a little parking lot at the far eastern edge of the property. Is that there just to satisfy parking requirements? Or it just seems a little odd, that stranded parking lot?
Yeah, so that parking lot is what exists today and was used for the restaurant. This is the area, it's adjacent to the area that would be reserved for future development, something that would have to come back to the Planning Commission and Council for review. P petitioner is going to reserve this parking area until such time that they know what's going to be developed on the balance of the site. It doesn't mean it's going to stay there forever, but more than likely, that parking would be used in connection with any future construction on this portion of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to petitioners to come into Livonia. I am a motorcycle enthusiast. I was excited to see this depth of a plan and how intricate it is, and seeing that you're moving some other locations, I believe, and consolidating maybe here in Livonia. So thanks for coming to our city. To Mr. Tormina or to the petitioners, what is the current square footage of the building, the existing building?
I can answer that. It's about 14,400 square feet.
So this building would be a little bit larger?
It would be just under twice the size, yeah.
And then, is there any worries? I know there's that large retaining wall to the southwest, maybe west, southwest area along the freeway. Is there any concerns with that, with the expansion of the building and whatnot, or?
I know that that was analyzed with the prior development, but I'm going to let the contractor answer that question.
Good evening. Thank you, Counsel. Jason Ann Standig, Pocono Construction Company Contractor. The setback off of I-275, there's a 66-foot easement that exists there already for a water storm system. So we have to stay that far away from it. So there doesn't seem to be any kind of issue engineering-wise or anything with that.
Awesome. Well, I think it's a beautiful plan I'd like to offer in approving for the regular.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, House President. Through the chair to the petitioner. If approved, when do you think that you'll be breaking ground in the spring?
Quite frankly, as quickly as possible. My name is Charlie Noel. I'm going to be the owner of the two dealerships. And I'm, thank you for allowing me to present myself and this structure that this team has put together. Extremely excited to be back in Livonia. Actually, I'm born and raised in Livonia and went to Livonia Public Schools all the way through K through 12. And opened the BMW, or excuse me, the Ducati dealership in 2012 in Birmingham. And just recently, in May of 2021, purchased the BMW store, which is currently being, operating in Plymouth. And quite frankly, I'm excited about this opportunity to come back to Livonia. You know, nobody in Livonia was estranged to what Doc's was and how much time we all spent there. So, you know, I'm excited to be on that piece of property again, which is going to be exciting. But, but no, our intention is to close on the property, providing that we get the necessary approvals and then start construction immediately.
Awesome. I thank you for bringing this back home, honestly. It's been, Doc's has been obviously dilapidated for some time. And seeing this, it's a beautiful building and appreciate you bringing this forward. And what are your hours? I'm just messing, it's, I'm going to, Ms. Toy, no. It's very cool. Thank you very much. It's exciting.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you, Mr. President, if I may. Mr. Owen, did you say?
Yes, Noel.
Noel?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to say, these prints are fabulous. I, you know, you see-
This gentleman's right here.
You do a beautiful job. I mean, you know, even color the cars and, I mean, it just stands out at you, and I just, I mean, if that's any indication of the kind of work you're going to do. And I'm sure you're a Bentley guy, so, yeah, now, no, you went to Stevenson, didn't you?
I did.
I knew that, Derek.
Family wasn't there.
Yeah, I'd like to remove that approving. Go Churchill.
Laura, that's called the metaverse. You can go there anytime you want.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you for doing a great job.
So this is Andrew Moisev, the architect.
What's his name?
Andrew Moisev.
Moisey. Thank you, Mr. Moisey. Beautiful job.
Mr. Donavick, did you have anything else?
Yeah, just briefly, I hope that if this does get approved, that you look into joining the Chamber of Commerce. They're a great organization here in Livonia. And I think Councilwoman Toy wants to be like a test driver, something like that on the bike. So I look forward to seeing that. Thank you, sir.
Okay, you have an approving. You said that for the regular. Do you have an objection with consent?
No, Mr. President. I'd like to see that consent, please.
Okay. So you have an approving for consent. Any audience communication on this? There is none, so you're all set. You're going to have an approval, most likely, at the next meeting. You don't have to attend, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Welcome back. All right, item number five is a site plan from the Planning Commission, submitted by Plymouth Armory LLC, requesting approval to construct in addition to the existing building at 27495 Five Mile Road, located on the north side of Five Mile Road between Instra Road and Foch Avenue in the southwest quarter of Section 13. Mr. Tormina?
Mr. President, if we could verify the petitioners here.
Anybody here from Plymouth Armory LLC? Plymouth Armory LLC? Might it be appropriate that we pass this along to the regular and give them an opportunity to come?
I'm not sure if any audience members are here on that, on this issue. I don't-
Would anybody in the council like to offer an approving for the regular?
I'll offer an approving for regular.
Okay, is there any audience communication on number five? Come on up, please. Your name and address, sir?
Last name's Haffey, 15341 Foch, Livonia.
Okay.
We didn't even hear about this meeting. We never hear about these meetings. We live right across the street from this property. We've not been made aware that it was going to be a gun shop. When I bought my house 25 years ago, I would not have bought a house with a gun shop across the street. We just found out about this just about eight months ago. We've been to two meetings on it. But that being said, there's been talk that he wants to put a gun range there, too. It's like, I can't tell you how much we're opposed to any kind of gun range. Gun shop, I guess I can live with, because it's already going to be there. We had no word in it, no, no voice whatsoever. If this has anything to do, I know he's had a footing poured for probably the last year. So we didn't understand what this was about. Does he want to add on to this additional footing that he's already got there? He has not built on it yet. He's got the footing and the ground. He's got-
I understand your objections. This is the first that we're hearing about it as a counsel. He's not here to explain it to us. So we have no information. Normally, when somebody doesn't show up for the study meeting, we put it to the regular, just so that we have a point in time set going forward, where we will have another opportunity to hear from them.
When is that, December 5th? Is that what that was?
It'll be December 5th, yeah.
Do we get notice? How come we don't get notices of any of this?
I can't tell you that. Mr. Tormina, would he normally get a notice?
No.
Have you asked him?
Is it posting now? It's a type of petition that does not require notification to the residents other than posting the agenda through the city website and other means. But it does not require personal notification or notification in the newspaper.
What about for a gun shop?
Okay, we can't have a question and answer. I understand your frustration here. There are some items that come before us that the petitioners are required to notify people in the surrounding area. Mr. Tormina, who's our expert in this, says that this is not one of those cases. This will next be on the agenda on December 5th. I can tell you that much.
I asked a question then.
No, this is not a question and answer.
Mr. President?
How we get notified? What's up with that? I don't get it. We live across the street and we don't hear anything about-
Excuse me, sir? I'm going to cut you off, okay?
Fine.
I understand your frustration. I do. Mr. Tormina or the council office, you can call and get more information there, okay?
I guess I'll do that.
Is there a card up on the podium there, sir? Mr. Barr?
I was just going to say, this is a study meeting. Why is there not questions allowed? I mean, this is-
From the audience? We don't typically take questions from the audience.
The purpose of a study meeting is to get information.
Not from the audience. It's not.
It's part of, okay, it's part of a study meeting. I don't understand. I mean, he's gone now, but I wouldn't shut down the residents from asking questions. It's a study meeting. It benefits us to hear those questions as well.
If you want to take up a question that they offer, you can. We don't typically- Okay, fine. That'll be on the, if there's no audience communication further on that matter, it'll be on the regular for the petitioner to have an opportunity to attend. Item number six is a request to approve a payment and extend contract with BSNA Software from the Office of the Treasurer in the amount not to exceed $40,000 per year to provide yearly service and support for the Equalizer Internet Tax Assessing System for a period of November 1, 2022, through October 31st of 2025, Council Resolution 317-19. Ms. Sheel?
Thank you. My name is Linda Sheel. I'm the City Treasurer for the City of Livonia. This evening, good evening, President Jolly and fellow council members. This evening, I'm requesting approval of the yearly payments to BSNA Software for the next three years for their software support of our tax database and internet service for the tax and assessing system with an amount not to exceed $40,000 per year. BSNA is a sole provider for this service. This amount will also include the BSNA Delinquent Personal Property Tax System, Special Assessment, and Miscellaneous Receivable System. BSNA has been doing an excellent job working with my staff and providing support services. Approval of this request will mean that the City of Livonia can continue to provide free-of-charge tax and assessing information to not only our residents, but also to mortgage companies, title companies, realtors, contractors, and prospective buyers through the city website.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Morgan indicated first.
Go right here. Yeah, I'd like to offer an approving for the regular.
Okay. We have an approving for the regular?
Consent, consent, I'm sorry.
We have an approving for the consent. If there are no objections, is there any audience communication on item number six? I see none. Ms. Toy, you got a comment?
To Treasurer Sheel, thank you very much. They've been with the Treasurer's Office for a long time, haven't they?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. When I was Treasurer, I used them, and they're excellent. And I'm glad to see, and their prices haven't really resulted too bad, even, and that was a long time ago. So kudos to you guys there, you, Madam Treasurer, and the people in the Treasurer's Office. Great job on this.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, again, audience communication? I see none. You have an approving for the consent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven is a request for resolution of support for grant application to the Michigan DNR for the Department of Parks and Recreation for support of the Jackie Kirksey Recreation Center Splash Pad renovation project to provide wider accessibility to recreational services. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council President Jolly. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. We're seeking council's approval to apply for a Michigan DNR Spark Grant. This is ARPA funds that are funding this project. The DNR is the fiduciary of these. We are looking for the resolution, because our deadline to apply is December 19th, 2022. This is a project already budgeted, but we have the opportunity to expand the project a little bit. I think our budget right now is $400,000 for this project, approved in 2023 fiscal year. We're looking for a $600,000 ask. There is no matching requirement on this grant. These are awards up to $1 million. The current, the current splash pad we have outside is original to the facility, built in 2003. It does not meet 2010 ADA requirements, are an updated pad wood, which would increase the accessibility for this recreational many, as well as, coming out of COVID, we've seen, obviously, an increase for outdoor, increased demand for outdoor recreational amenities. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Ms. McIntyre?
I'm happy to offer this for the approving resolution. It's DNR grant money. I would just like to comment that if we remember, the American Rescue Plan Act, $1.9 trillion for coronavirus relief package. $350 billion of that was allocated to state, local, and tribal governments to mitigate the fiscal impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic and provide vital services. Again, Mr. Davis, I lodge you for finding an opportunity for us to use this money that's available for all of the taxpayers who heard that they were paying for vital services. I hope you know, there's so much money sloshing around in the state. They're looking to give it to communities to improve-
in the state. They're looking to give it to communities to improve recreational facilities. So thank you. And I am very happy the splash pad needs to be redone, and you've done a great job in finding the money, but-
We hope.
Well, and applying, and applying appropriately for the money that's available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have an approving-
On consent.
On consent. Anybody else from the council? Any audience communication? I see none.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Item number eight is a request for authorization to purchase two ABI Force groomers from the Department of Public Works for use by the Parks Department from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
Hello, Council. Doug Moore with the Department of Public Works. The first item before you is two diamond groomers that will be used at Bicentennial and Ford Field. We're going to get rid of two John Deere Gators that we used to use. They'll be auctioned off. Total cost for the two units is eighty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars, and we're getting them from US Golf Cars in Caledonia. They're a specific dealer for this item.
Mr. McCullough?
I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent. If anybody has ever seen these things, they're really awesome.
They are cool.
And they have a bunch of cool attachments, like laser levels, and makes job easy.
We're getting one, or they both have it.
You're pumped up, I can tell.
Yes, I am.
All right, audience communication. I see none. We have an approving for consent on eight. Item number nine is a request to purchase Parks Maintenance Utility Vehicle through the My Deal State Bid Process from DPW to replace vehicles that have exceeded life expectancy from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
So this is a litany of John Deere equipment. We're purchasing from John Deere with the My Deal. The servicing dealer will be hustling out of South Lion. The total cost for everything is a hundred seventy thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. There's three Gators, of which there's two types. A mid-sized tractor we'll use to tow equipment and do the outside walks, a small utility tractor, and a tow behind fifteen-foot field deck.
Council?
Approving if somebody's going to, on consent, then.
Okay, we have an approving on nine for consent from Toy. Any audience communication? There's none. We'll move on to 10. Request to approve a one-year extension with Cremboli Nursery from DPW to order, excuse me, in order to utilize 2022 pricing.
Item 10.
I'm sorry.
That's 11.
That's item 10 on, what I just read is item 10 on mine.
No, 10.
That is Department of Public Works.
Livonia HVAC unit. Okay, that's not what 10 is on my paperwork here. Item 10 is an award of bid from DPW to replace a rooftop HVAC unit at the Livonia Fire Department Headquarters from budgeted funds.
The heat exchanger failed on the rooftop unit at Fire Station One and needs to be replaced. The part is ten thousand dollars. To get it up on the roof, the crane will be there. We're just going to replace the whole unit rather than put a part into a unit that could fail any time. And the total cost for that is twenty-eight thousand, one hundred one dollars. Contractor feels that it can be done by mid-December.
Council President?
Yes, Mr. McCullough?
I would be happy to offer an approving on consent, and I'm happy to hear that you're replacing the whole unit.
Thank you.
Any audience communication? I see none. Moving on to 11. Request to approve a one-year extension with Cremboli Nursery from the Public Service Division in order to utilize 2022 pricing from budgeted funds.
Cremboli Nursery, our 2022 tree planting contractor, offered to hold their pricing into 2023. We realized a almost thirty percent below the next competitor on last year's program. So we're asking council to approve them for the 2023 program. For a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, that's the whole tree fund, tree planting fund that's in the road millage program. That would allow us to plant five hundred and forty trees.
Council?
So moved.
I think Mr. Morgan beat you out there.
Go right ahead, Mr. Morgan.
No, that's fine. I offer to approve it on consent.
Okay, we have an approving on consent for 11. Any audience communication? I see none. Moving on to 12.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. A request to approve Water Service Contract Amendment Number Four between Great Lakes Water Authority and the City of Livonia to make minor adjustments and corrections to the original signed contract, which will be in effect for the next four years until the next contract reopener. Mr. Rushlow?
Good evening, Council. Jacob Rushlow with the Department of Public Works. This is the Fourth Amendment to the original model contract that was signed between the city and then DDBSD back in 2009. This allows for periodic contract reopeners to reevaluate system demand changes and modify projected volume and flow values. Through the reopener process, the department has proposed some adjustments that you'll see in Exhibit B in those values with respect to our projected annual volume. We've proposed these revisions to more accurately reflect the consumption numbers that we've been experiencing over the last four years since our last reopener. The proposed changes here would be in effect for the next four years through 2026, until the next contract reopener would begin that year. It's a recommendation of the department that council proceed to approve the proposed contract amendment as presented and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the amendment.
Thank you, council. Ms. McIntyre?
I will offer an approving for the consent.
Okay, audience communication? There's none. We'll move on to item 13. Request to accept Storm Water Facilities Maintenance Agreement from the Engineering Division from UHS Madonna LLC in conjunction with construction of a storm drain system that provides adequate drainage for property developed on the west side of Levan Road, north of Schoolcraft, in the southwest quarter of Section 20. Mr. Zalinsik?
President Jolly, again, it's just a housekeeping issue. Looking for your approval. Thank you.
So moved.
Ms. Toy, is that on consent?
Yes, please.
Any audience communication? I see none. Moving on to 14. A request to approve a 2023 road repair program from the Engineering Division as reviewed by the Citizens Advisory Committee on Roads for the first year of a ten-year paving millage approved by Livonia residents. Mr. Zalinsik?
Thank you, Council President and City Council members. Basically, we want to thank the residents for passing the millage overwhelmingly eighty percent, so we can go on another 10 years for fixing our roads. We had a meeting on October 12th with the Citizens Road Advisory Committee meeting, and then on the November 3rd. With that, this is the following resolution that was passed. Citizens Advisory Committee of the Roads having reviewed the proposed 2023 road program, DPW, has hereby recommend the 23 program in the amount of eight million, eight hundred and five thousand, of which four point three seven five will go for concrete, three point four two five will go for asphalt, and one million, five thousand will go for selective slab. So with that, looking for your approval and appreciate their efforts to, again, continue on redoing our roads. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Ms. McIntyre?
I'll offer this for the consent, and I'd also like to point out that the Citizens Advisory Committee on Roads meets, is it twice a year, Mr. Zalinsik?
Yes.
And the meetings are publicized, and we have a number of citizens that serve on this committee, but the meetings are open to everyone and they are publicized to everyone in the city. And throughout the year, we hear endlessly about Livonia roads and this and that and the complaints. We hear it at the meetings. We get emails. We get phone calls. Yet, I've attended a number of these meetings, and generally, there is no one, or sometimes maybe only one or two citizens there to offer input. So just a reminder to the residents of Livonia that there are great opportunities for you to have a voice and give input and ask questions in the planning stages of things like our road repair program. So thank you, Mr. Zalinsik, for your work with that committee, and really thank you to the commissioners who serve.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have an approving there for consent. Audience communication? I see none. We'll move on to 15. The request to amend the engineering contract through QBS process with OHM advisors for design engineering services for the 2023 asphalt road program, Contract 23A. Mr. Zalinsik?
Again, we have OHM advisors that'll assist us in this task. They've been on this program since the inception in 2002. We have Mark Locke here in the audience. Again, he's been an asset to this community and helping us throughout this entire process. This year, we have three point four seven five million dollars set aside for the asphalt program, of which some roads have been in the previous stages of design are now going to come to light. As you know, back in February, we had issues with the oil prices and things of that nature, so we had to cut a few roads off prior to that. So we are looking to facilitate doing approximately 23 segments of asphalt. I'm just going to highlight a couple ones that probably of your concern, and that's going to be Gil Road, south of Seven Mile. And we're also going to take the concrete section north of Seven Mile and perform from Southampton up to Brenton. About three years ago, we did from Brenton to Eight Mile, so we'll do an asphalt overlay there. So those are probably the two critical ones you'll see on the asphalt road. There's other ones in the city that got delayed, Hathaway, Grim, Pickford, on the east side of Middle Belt there. But just wanted to give you a couple highlights. But looking for their assistance, they actually reduced their overall cost to a hundred eleven thousand. Originally, it was reduced by 26% since we did some preliminary design work previously. So that's a good thing for us. We get a discount. And looking for your approval to move forward with the design process. We can bid it out in February, get the best prices we can to start, again, mid to late April, early May, depending on the weather. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. OHM and Mr. Locke do a great job for our city. Looking forward to some of these roads getting repaired and the work that their engineering department does. I'd like to offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
Thank you. Any audience communication? I see none. On to 16. Request to amend engineering contract through the QBS process with Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick, Inc. for design engineering services for the 2023 Concrete Road Program, Contract 23C. Mr. Zalinsik?
Yes, again, based on the previous items, we have a budget of four point three seven five million for concrete road program. Looking for AW's assistance. Again, they've been with this program since 2008, helping us over the last 14 years, looking for the 15th year anniversary to start the first year off right. Scott Lockwood, the Executive Vice President, is here in the audience, along with Ross Wilberding. Both these guys have been very efficient in getting our program bid out and getting these roads done and doing over and above on some extra locations if necessary. So I just want to thank their efforts and their inspectors out there. We have, fortunately, we have some good inspectors to help us keep this project moving along. So next year, for 2023, we're looking for their assistance in the amount of one eighty-eight, one twenty-five. That's, again, based on the QBS contracts. They get a reduction of the design percentage based on previous years, so looking for assistance there. A couple highlights on the concrete program is going to be West Chicago between Farmington and Hubbard. As you know, Wayne County is doing Farmington right now between Plymouth and Orange Lawn. That's, that's well overdue. They're doing the southbound side. They recently did the northbound side up to Plymouth Road, so looking for that to be completed. We're waiting for that segment to be done. Also, a few other segments will be completed, but I wanted to just let you know, in 2024, we'll get federal funds to do West Chicago between Harrison and Inkster, and in 2025, Newburgh Road between Ann Arbor Trail and Plymouth Road. So those are coming, those are through federal aid funds, but I just wanted to give you a couple highlights on the concrete program. With that, looking for your approval to move forward, again, design, and bid this out in February to get the best prices to start construction late April, early May.
Are those ARPA funds?
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. On a personal note, AW was actually in my neighborhood this year, and I was so excited because we had some rough roads, and they did a phenomenal job. These guys were out there all the time, except those barrels in front of my driveway were frustrating. But nonetheless, they did a great job, and from a personal, I saw how hard they were working out there for our residents. So I'd love to offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
Thank you. Audience communication? I see none. Item 17 is request to amend engineering contract through QBS process with Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick for design engineering services for the 2023 Concrete Road Maintenance Selective Slab Program, Contract 23J. Mr. Zalinsik?
Again, this is the last of the items I have this evening. Again, we got a million dollars, a million, five thousand dollars to spend towards fixing these selective slabs that are out in our subdivision streets, where you have pounding water or heaved pavement or concerns where deteriorated pavement has occurred for residents. These are the ones that they call in, and the engineering department, along with the EPW, has a list of locations on the spreadsheet, which you try to monitor. With that, we were able to take 16 locations off with the road program as part of the 23C approval. Here, we're doing approximately 25 miscellaneous locations and 18 segments of roadway in the subdivisions itself throughout the various sections in the city. So we're covering a lot of ground, and we're asking for your approval, any amount of fifty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars for AW to complete this work, and, again, look forward to another successful program, getting these areas cleared up from the residents' concerns, and hopefully addressing any calls coming throughout the year.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, let's move that to consent for approval.
Thank you. We have an approving for consent on 17. Audience communication? I see none. We'll go to 18. That's the proposed 2023 City Council Meeting Schedule, coming from me as council president, in accordance with provisions of the Open Meetings Act. We posted this and shared it via email and had an opportunity to comment. Entertain direction.
So moved.
We have approving from Toy. Is that for consent?
Yes.
Okay. Any audience communication on 18? I see none. That concludes the agenda. We'll go back to audience communication. Is there any audience communication? I see none. Any closing council remarks? I see none. We'll call the meeting adjourned. Good night, Livonia.